Which would be a renewal levy passed. To me, it would be something that would mean that there would be a dereliction of your duties as board members. Number one. Number two, to talk about engagement, we need to be engaging these people in the community and residents and voters to come out and let's get this levy passed that time. It is no time for us to sit around here and to me, I'll call it what I think it is, petty politics. That it is time for us to come together and stop this foolishness. And when you're talking about budgets and financial workers, all of that is public or should be. And as far as I know, when I was working for the state, it was public information. That you have access to all of that as a board. But I'm saying to you, incoming major, do not, and I have to beg of you and I will fight you with every being in my body, to not deal or bother with this school levy. Let's pass this levy, let's get the things that are needed for our kids and our students that make it better. And really, really, we want to engage the CEO, then let's do that. Number letter, you have major concerns. I have been to a couple of the meetings that were publicly held and I only saw a couple of board members there. And I think it's important. It has been this in the community, there are some things. There is a plan and I have seen it. It has been set out to the various agencies here in this community. And I sit on the Board of Workers for one of those and I have seen some of the plan. I may or may not agree with all of it. But I'm saying to you, the one thing you do not do, if you do not punish this community or this children because of what you feel. Let's get that levy passed, let's put it on the ballot and let's, all of us working in this community, do what we have to do in order to see that our children have the things that they need. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I know you guys have missed me. Okay, I'm concerned about the levy too. Why aren't you contacting organizations and different people in the community? I've always sat on the board, most of them, when we have a levy. So, what's the secret? Let us know while we can help. We're, I'm used to people getting contacted and having meetings, people donating funds or whatever. Then you have a big fundraiser and all that stuff. Are we not doing the same thing? Is it something new? Anybody can ask me on that? Mr. President?
We've never done levies, let's through the levy committee. And we don't operate the levy committee and the levy committee operates as a separate entity from this Board of Education.
When did they change that?
It's always been that way.
Not the ones I used to sit on, everybody was involved. So now you no longer want the community involved, right?
No, it's not the Board of Education that operates the levy.
I know you have a special person to organize and all that.
Correct.
Bambi and...
Where's she at?
I don't know, but it's quiet. Like, we don't know what's going on in the community.
Perhaps it would help if we would say who is on this special levy committee?
We don't know, it's not a branch of the Board of Education. Citizens of the Lorraine Committee is a separate entity from this Board of Education. We don't appoint people, we don't direct that committee. They operate separately from this board. Always has and always will.
But you appoint them?
No, we do not.
Okay. I just wonder what was up and, uh, watch some of your languages, you know, I'm not too happy with us still playing games. Our kids are not being considered, it's not about you guys. It's about what we're gonna do to close that gap and get our kids back being well educated. They obsess me when I see this little fiddly stuff. Everybody's supposed to be grown here. Everybody have a lane to be in, be what you're supposed to be and let everybody else do what they're supposed to do. That would make me happy.
May I say something again?
Sure.
Number one, uh, for years, I too, you know, worked on the levy committee. And you have people in this community to engage, I could say, Lord, Bambi, Beller, uh, Janet Garcia, and a number of us. We've worked on that committee. We got out in the community, we got far, we contacted and though you were there and you know what we did and it was done. And the board members, this board, knew what the committee members were, who they were, and what we were doing. And we worked together in concert with one another. That's how it works.
And missly, that, that was facilitated through central office, not the, not the Board of Education.
Well, central office is the board, as far as I'm concerned. Okay, let's not...
No, not when it comes to the levy committee, so...
I tell you what, I'm telling you something right now. Let's do it, let's get on it, whether it's central, whether whoever else has to do it and whoever you have to do. Let's get it and let's get busy.
What I would say is if you're interested, uh, contact the superintendent's office or CEO's office at this time.
You know, I don't have any problem with doing that.
No, right. Because that's always the way it's been.
And we, well, that's the way it will be. I still want, you get one thing, Tony, and don't you forget it, you were elected. All of you sitting here were elected by the people in this community. And as, and if it says that you, this Board of Education, that you have the authority to put a levy on the board, let's get with it, let's do it, let's do whatever it is that we have to do to bring these entities in this community together and get this levy passed for our kids. That's all we ask and the community is asking us. All the rest of that crap, I don't even want to hear. Except do what we gotta do for the betterment of the city of Lorraine. You know, it, we sitting on, that's one thing I said about Lorraine, I've said it for years, we sitting on a duel. In my mind here, we been nitpicking about something else. Let's get busy, let's get this levy ready, let's get it on the ballot and let's get it passed and let's do what we have to do for these kids. That's not about you, this board, or the CEO. Let's get that together right now. This is our community, this is our village and these are our children. And we will not stand by and not even have this levy considered.
May I interject something while we talk for the schools? I think what has happened was when they read this report in the newspaper, it, it does say, "It is difficult for the school board to ask voters for more money when the board cannot get information about how the school district is spending money it already has." Then it goes down further and says, "If a school levy goes to a vote in Lorraine, getting it passed takes a lot of work and a lot of harmony among the, what, school administrators, Board of Education, and the community, which includes students, parents, and residents." It says, again, "I think it's just about impossible to pass a ballot initiative when you have a level of distrust. If the trust is absent at any level, I think you create an atmosphere in which passage is highly unlikely." And I think that is what caused the disturbance, uh, among the community. Because it sounded as if we are not working in harmony.
Amen.
Amen to that one.
So many of those, um, can I? Many of those statements were for me and they are absolutely true. So, um, putting a levy on the, on the initiative is one thing. Passing it is a completely different thing. Uh, it'd, it'd be wonderful if you just put it on the ballot in that minute passed. If we do not have a cooperative environment between the board, the administration, the community, it will be very difficult, if not impossible, to pass. Passing school initiatives, the, the last new money piece took us 20 years to do it. And there was significant work over periods of time, over long periods of time. We've never disengaged the levy committee during this entire process. Usually the levy committee kinda goes on idle. This thing, the switch has been turned off. Trying to restart that machine is, is gonna be very difficult. And we are operating, whether people like it or not, whether they're aware of it or not, in an element not just of distrust, but absence of information. The information we requested for this meeting about financial pieces, this is a public record, as you said, correct?
That's right.
Well, based on our public information's request, we have not gotten that public record yet. No, you can't, pull it from where? Where, please, pull it from where?
I, no, I, I know James, um, Sam Bahrain. What I was saying is even if, if you said, I said, some of that stuff is public record, so some of it's online.
No, no, none of this stuff...
That you're requesting?
Yeah, it's not on...
I think, I think what I feel as, is that like it's, it's a disconnect because you even saying that as a board member to say how difficult and impossible it is. Well, if you don't believe it, how are you gonna get community members?
It's not about believing, we're talking about...
Well, even factually stating it, even stating it says that, that you don't have the, you're saying, I don't think we can do it.
Exactly.
And, and that's, and that coming from a board member...
Well, it, it's just being, I'm just stating how I feel. Right, but how you, wait, wait, yeah, that is because what I am stating are things that are objectively true. About passing, about, about if someone's trying to be elected, trying to pass an initiative, you have to have an element of harmonious work to get it done. It's like deciding that you want to be a doctor and you've got a 1.1 GPA in your senior. There are some things that are just logistically pragmatic that if we don't do, you can't, you can't knock this thing off starting here. You've gotta start here to do it.
But you guys are groundwork. It's, it's, it states that you all have the ability, it says the job that you all have can pass elect.
First of all, okay...
So you can get the vehicle started, right? Am I right on that?
I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm making a statement on, she read some things and so I'm not, I'm not...
But you asked me a question, so I got up. So, my question, my question is, you don't have to answer it, I'm just gonna state it, is that okay, sir?
I would like to finish what I was saying. And then, then we're back into the public comment again, okay? So what I'm simply stating is that right now, the atmosphere, the conditions, this is what I feel. This is, this is my, this is not a, a fact, this is how I feel about this. The present conditions that we are in make it extremely difficult to pass money initiatives in an environment where people don't just give away tax money. That's what I think, based on, because I've worked on all the levy campaigns since I've been here. Um, in other campaigns, and that's what I'm stating. I'm stating that if we do not have a significant change in how we communicate. So, we have three chances of passing a levy. Um, the first one comes up, we have till, what, 19?
Yeah, you have all 19.
Yeah, so, and what I'm saying is this, is before we, we've gotta do some work to repair some, to create some communications and trust. And this is part of the process we're in right now. We are not, this is not the moment of the levy. What I, the statements that I'm making is these are things that have to change in order for this levy to have a chance.
And I'm here as a community person to say, what can I do? What can we do to help this? Because we do have the ability to change the atmosphere. We really do. We, is things made, it can't, if, if that's what you state and that's the way you feel, you have a right to way you feel. But you put it in the paper, so you gave us the ability to come here and state how we feel. And I feel we can change this, but we have to be willing.
Mr. Hill, are we not just working on a renewal?
Yes.
So if a renewal is, that means that no money is gonna come from and add to our property? Cause it's a renewal. So that's all we're, we're worried about now? Or do we want, do we need additional money now? Cause we getting, what, 3.1, 2 million?
Uh, well, at this point, the renewal would be the, the number one thing, yes. Of course, down the line, um, five-year forecast is not fiscally sound all the way through, so of course, at some point, we would have to look at the idea of new money, absolutely.
So, the renewal, in other words, it's okay, but we need additional money on top of the renewal?
A few years down the road, yeah, that would be something that would need to be considered. But at this point, the renewal, when I do the forecast, I assume the non-passage of the renewal. I remove it and then add it back in at the bottom. So based on that, yes, the, without the renewal, it's kinda two separate pieces. Without the renewal, obviously, that takes us, we aren't fiscally sound for less time. But when you add the renewal back in, considering, then yeah, we're still probably about three to four years out of needing new money. And it's a ti, it's a timing piece too, because we also have three current expense levies that come off the books in 2022. So we would need to put those back onto renewal as well. So there's kind of a window in between those two, uh, that we would probably wanna look at new money.
So, if we go ahead and just do the renewal?
And that's just staying status quo.
Okay.
That's assuming that we're not saving money, that's assuming current spending levels remain the same. Then, yeah, at that point, at some point, three, three to three and a half years down the road, we would need new money.
But we're worried now about three or four years coming up?
Well, I'm worried now more about the renewal than I am than that, yeah.
So the renewal is something that we can automatically do?
The tough thing about re, about losing a renewal is you lose money.
Yes.
I know.
New money means we get 20, 19 money, 20, 15 money. Losing money means we go back to 2015, 2016.
But we don't wanna lose the renewal.
No, we don't.
Okay. So it's almost like a done deal, isn't it? That if we have the renewal, it's not gonna increase property taxes, it's not going to do anything, it's just a renewal.
I don't know that.
So then we have enough money for the next three or four years, we're, we're fine financially. Then we need to add additional money after that.
Okay, if everything stays status quo, yes, we would be fine for those three years. The, I, I wouldn't go out and say it's a done deal for a renewal. It is much easier to pass a renewal than new money, obviously, because it's, it's not impacting taxpayers further.
And if we keep letting the taxpayers know that this doesn't cost us anything, except a vote, they should be very pleased with that. And to see how wonderful the board is working with the community because they don't have to do anything but that at this time.
I've got, I've got a question. When we got reports before, which we don't get anymore, we haven't got the reports since the CEO took over.
You're talking month and finances?
Yeah, yeah, we, we, so we don't know, we, as a board, do not know what we used, we used to know what the finances were. We used to get a five-year forecast, right? Didn't, didn't we have a $6 million carryover? Was it in the last year?
Yes.
We had a $6 million?
Actually, I believe it was more than that.
What I'm gonna say is that everybody is assuming, and you always need money to run a school district, don't get me wrong. I've always said, every school district is, uh, you got, you have three years, okay, before you need to, you know? But, but what, I, I think what people are trying to say is we have to justify that we need this money, okay?
That's why you need some money.
You have to, no, you have to justify, you have to justify that you need the money because things, things have happened in budgets, state budgets and our budgets. I mean, I could ask you a question, how, how much do you think it takes, how much do you think our school district runs on each year?
Millions of dollars.
Oh, yeah, but, I mean, but, I, that, that's, that's, that's easy, but, but it's around, with, with grants and everything, I believe we're talking around 160 million. Okay? Around 160 million and that, and that 3 million is just a percentage. Do we need it? It, it could be that we do because it's, it's always good to, but, but here, what we have to say is...
And we need a community saying we need it.
We don't know, okay? We, I, I can't, would I like it? Yes, I would like it, but I couldn't tell you that I actually know because we don't have the handle on it that we used to have, we don't get the information that we used to get.
We know we generically need money, we know we generically need money. Our job is not to be generic.
Question.
Um, it's, for example...
I hope I, I hope I said that right.
There's always a need for money to operate a school district. Our responsibility is to know the financial condition of the district. Yes.
Understanding.
Yeah, so that's what we're saying is, we don't have, we will, we will have that, we hope to get it soon. We don't even know, we can't get it now.
Well, there's a guy sitting there and now there's your friend.
Would you share with us why we don't have it?
You have the financial reports and I sent them with this last request.
So we got reports today?
Yes.
At 5:07.
At 5:07, I got email.
But that's, that's what you said, maybe didn't happen, but now we got it, so the atmosphere is changing.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of information.
I understand what you're saying.
It's a lot of bad information, I worked for the state auditors' office for years, so I, but you can get it. It's not, and the way you have, the guys have the technology now, whatever the board wants to know, let them know. That's not the heavy secret, but let's get out there. And don't talk of negative because we, the community, voted you in and we are the ones who can say what we want you to do. And we want you to get that levy on the ballot and we will work to pass it.
I'm Arch Walker.
I'm Arch.
And, um, it seems like that we don't, it's, it's, there's too much administration, there's paying too much money. I don't know, I don't know, but the CEO, he's spending money like a drunken sailor, I don't know how. When I read the articles in the paper, I just can't make up, how is he gonna pay for it or how are we gonna pay for it? This is my concern. And also, the other thing that just, when he called, I know this is not relative, but he called the students scholars. And I'm sorry, but it's kinda like telling all the little leaguers are playing baseball, you all get a trophy just for participation. And I just think the terminology is not, is not, not correct. Anyways, but getting back to the tax levy, uh, we just don't have enough information for what is being spent? Who is being eliminated and how is, and how directly do they really affect the community?
That's right. So we're gonna get all the information that they need, that this board needs?
And providing the information as soon as it is available.
As soon as it's available to you?
Yes.
Then it will be available then to them. Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Of course.
Okay, now, yeah.
Mr. Hill, because I, 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 I hate when there's this ambiguity. Has the information been made available you readily to give to us?
Well...
See, it's, it's, it's a well, either it's a yes or no, it's not a well. So, so what, what happens is, Mr. Hill provides the information when he gets it, but then, the, the, the reality, the treasurer does not have this information. That's what I would like to know. He's in a very awkward position, he's in a tough spot.
Hey, he's in a tough spot and then you gotta wanna put us and our kids in a tough spot?
We're all in tough spots.
Nah, we, nah, you know what? You know what?
No, I think what, and I'll just add, and, and I, and I respect and hear everything that everyone is saying. And we're, we're trying to be the grownups in the room in a sense where we're not being pet. But when we specifically hear from our administrators that they're being told not to give us information, that's a problem. And you guys sit there like, hey, you guys can do whatever you want, and that's not true because they're being told not to share with us. That is a problem, no matter how we go here, that's a problem, we can't run a business like that.
What's the protocol? What do you have?
The board should be able to get any information that they request, as you say. And I'm telling you, we're not getting that. And now they're spoon-feeding some, but the some is not the all, so you can't say, you got what you asked for because it's not what we asked for, it's pieces.
It's incomplete information.
And then you guys say, well, you come to town hall meetings, we're there, we're here at all? We have official meetings here where we're able to pass resolutions and those kinda things. That happens in a true board meeting, not in, not in a campfire meeting, you know? This happens in a board meeting. And that's what we're saying. The reality is, and, so you guys are all clear. I don't have issue with the CEO, I think he's a fine gentleman. But just the way we're doing business is not the proper way we can do business. But we're trying to not say we're in a tent for a tax column of a fight, which is what is being made to. We hear about a levy issue from a community meeting and now we're being accused of not putting a levy on the ballot, which isn't true. We've never had a conversation with the CEO about a levy. So come and let's talk about the levy and then we can see where we go with the levy. But we're hearing about it, so you guys are coming to jump us to say, you guys are doing this for the kids? You guys, hold on one second, I got the floor right now.
They're fine, but it's in the paper.
Because we heard about it from a business meeting where the levy information was brought up on an outside meeting, never in a board meeting. So we get a call from the paper, says, hey, we're in a meeting this morning, what do you guys think about this levy? We have to respond, well, what's going on with the levy? First time we're hearing about it is when they call us. Not in a meeting with the CEO to say, okay, what's our plan? That we've requested. We've requested that he comes to every board meeting we've had since he's been here. He's not showed up to one.
He doesn't have the guts.
I, I, ma'am, I, and there again, that is your right to say your feelings.
I don't say that.
But, but, but we're, we're not, we're not, honestly, we will never get anything accomplished by everybody taking their sides and having a battle. That's not what we're here for. We're not taking, we're on the side of the kids.
I have a quick question, and one of the board meetings where I attended, like a month or months ago, what, was her name, Bambi?
Yeah, Bambi.
What was Bambi talking about? She got up on the podium and was talking and asking you guys about a tax levy. When did you want her to start getting things together? Did it go over my head or was I hit, miss, miss, did I misunderstand her?
No, no.
You didn't misunderstand.
See, that, that goes to Mr. Baller's point about this Board of Education who has the one authority of levying tax dollars from the community having a real conversation with the CEO who's charged with the responsibility of spending and using that money. And that has not happened, so therefore, this Board of Education has never, at this point in time, had any conversation about a levy, which way we're doing, whether we're putting one out there, whether we're not putting one out there. We can't give direction to the levy committee if we haven't had a real conversation with the guy that's spending the money.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, when I was sitting here and she was asking, as the board, remember, go back and check, ask about when did you want this stuff to get, why didn't you tell her the same thing that you're telling me right now when she was standing up at the podium? That's what's confusing me. You didn't say anything about, we can't do this or this has to go on this or, you know, you never explained. But now it's like it's a whole different story.
No, 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 it's not a whole different story. We've invited...
No, it's not about the CEO.
It is.
No, 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 when I'm talking, let me finish, no, you let me finish.
We, we've talked, I've talked to Bambi, yes.
I know, she was up here, they recorded it and she was asking you, when do you want her to start getting ready? You said, we don't know, do you want this? We don't know, we have to, do you want, you know, she was asking all these questions. We don't know, we'll have to get back with you. That's all you said to her. And I'm sitting here, I'm saying, okay, when are we gonna have a levy, what we're gonna do? But if you had explained to her that we have to hear from the CEO, the CEO's not letting us know anything, I'd, I'm cool with it.
But, but what you're assuming is the conversation that we had with Bambi, we had with, that, listen, I've talked to Bambi because Bambi stood in front of us and talked and you were there.
Right, I was here, right.
And when I, just like after the, after the meeting, I talked to you for about 45 minutes, right? And the stuff I talked to you about, we talked about, we didn't talk about that there. So, to assume that there's no communication with anybody...
No, 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 I was just talking about the levy when Bambi was talking about the levy. Why, you know, I would've been, I'm all right with it if he had, what he's just saying now, I wish he hadn't said it when she was asking the questions. It was like, it's confusing to me that, you know, you were saying that the CEO, just be honest, if you're gonna be honest now, be, you should've been honest. The same thing you said to me now, you should've said when Bambi was up there and you didn't. All you gotta say, you can say CEO, right? You can say that, you can say CEO did not get, get back with us, we don't know, the CEO didn't give us any rundown in the money when she was standing up there. So I'm just saying, if you're gonna say it, one, say it what you mean when you mean what you're saying, okay? Be consistent, thank you, with what you're saying. You're saying something here now that you didn't say when she was up there about the, about the levy. That's all I'm saying.
Question again, when you get, and you do get the information and the financial reports and everything that you have, would you be then looking at it and making a decision? Or is it something that you just need to see in order?
So, or treasurer, superintendent or treasurer.
Yeah.
And, and let me, I'm in a very unique situation, obviously, between, you know, CEO. I, I have certain tasks I report to the CEO for, I have certain tasks I report to the board for. What, the information, when I have it available, is typically when it's official. Now, I will speak to the fact that a lot of the information that I, when I receive it, I'm receiving it probably later than normal because there is a lot of very sensitive information. There's a lot of changes going on, there are a lot of, you know, whether it be positions not being filled or new positions added, I mean, these are all, it involves people's personal lives. So at this point, in, in, you know, the, people are well aware of the, you know, the public records piece of it. So until something official, and when I speak to official, when I get assigned... So until something official, and when I speak to official, when I get a signed contract, or I get a signed, you know, request for funds, things along those lines. Um, and be that for a new contract, or be that for a new employee. That is when it becomes official, and that is when I'm able to supply it. And between both, I mean, it's just, I don't believe. It's just a very sensitive time. And I think that's what some of the things that are being kinda lost in between both sides. Uh, we're dealing with people's livelihoods, we're dealing with major changes in a community, that, that is, it's gonna be a difficult transition.
So you're saying there's a lag in information before things actually become official?
Before they're official, that is correct.
Okay.
But in our, in our history, as a board, though certain things aren't public, we're briefed on things as they are developing.
Well, because.
So, right, so when you hear it, we've, we've already heard it. We, we don't typically hear our information when you hear the information.
There's, there's a lead-up to it, because previously, they were the ones making it official.
Amen.
So that, that lead-up is.
Everybody's in transition, understanding, and you're all.
And we've never had to do a public information request as a board member of a district, from your district.
Right. Things are changed, so we have to, we have to roll with the changes. I got a question. Bambi, how can we get Bambi's information as a citizen, so we, so I can figure out how I can support Bambi, when we do make a decision? Is there, anybody have a Bambi's, is that, what's her full name, Bambi who?
Bambi Dylan.
Is there contact information for her? And I will contact her.
Bambi Dylan.
I have.
Dylan.
Dylan.
Dylan, I have it. See, I wrote something, because I'm trying to understand this myself. Exactly why I now said, a board in transition. When we were here before, we had a lot of power to do all the things that we wanted to do, because it was different. Now we have a CEO, and he does not have to tell us anything, until he gets ready to tell us something. The only thing that we are, I guess have our hands on, is the levy. That's it. We, we can't talk about employment, we can't talk about, uh, things that are in transition, because we have a CEO. And when you have a CEO, he does things the way that he wants them, for the betterment of the children. And because he's a change agent, it makes it very difficult for us to understand when we've been, for instance, Tony's been on the board for ten years. He was used to a, a, a sequential way of providing information that is no longer there. And so all of a sudden, he doesn't get any information. All of a sudden, we don't get information, because he does not have to do that, because he is the power now. There is no superintendent, you know? So now, there's a Mr. Hardy. And he's trying to become this wonderful change agent for us, so that we can get things done. So now there's a gap between what we know, what they know, and what he does.
But, and, and, and you're, that's absolutely correct. What hasn't changed, though, is what they didn't do in Houseville Seventy, is rearrange this process. So that process has changed. But this process was directly linked, like it is in six hundred and forty seven other school districts, to how this works. So when they changed that piece of that, it now impacts this entire process. And so what's gonna happen is, though Mr. Hardy has absolute autonomy.
Yes.
He will have to work with this body sooner or later.
Yes.
It is unavoidable, it's non-negotiable. The only way we're gonna have a discussion about a levy with the CEO is in a board meeting. Because you know what, we're not allowed to have the conversation any other place. The only place that we are bored is when the five of us are sitting here as a board. We can't go to his office and say, let's talk about the levy and that stuff. It's a board meeting. Otherwise, we're violating sunshine law. So what we've requested is that the CEO of our district come to a board meeting, and we can talk about this and a lot of other stuff. And that, and that, I would suggest, I'm thinking it's gonna happen, I hope it happens sooner than later. Right now, we are seven months in. So we could be seven months in, we could be eight months in, nine months in. But at some stage, there's going to be a conversation at a board meeting with the board and its administrative leader.
And I sit here and I wonder, coming down through the years and seeing things, now I see really why a lot of things in these young people are rising up. Because this is a bunch of crap.
It is.
Okay? The way it's doing, protocol, then I would say to you, as a board member, if that's what you say, have you all invited the CEO to sit down and talk about the levy? Every board meeting. Every board meeting.
Miss Lee, for some clarity.
Yes, please.
And to your point. The first item, eight point zero one, on our agenda, is levy discussion. The CEO was invited, so we can have a full-fledged discussion on the levy, for the first time. Until we have that conversation with him, it's hard for us to make a decision one way or another. And we haven't made a decision, because this is the only real conversation we've had about the levy. So, that's why he was invited to come here. I requested some information from him, and unfortunately, I didn't get the information we needed, nor did he make an appearance this evening. So now, we have to do it again for next meeting, and see if he comes to the next meeting. But all we can do is invite him.
It prolongs the process, so it's just politics.
You know, if there. It's a political body. It's like, it's like Congress. Listen, it, it, listen, it is politics, because that's what this is. We're elected officials.
Right, for us.
Our political process to.
Not too hard, for us.
Initiate all ballots, there's a process that goes through. It's not, it's not a bad process. It's what it is.
The kids continue to suffer.
Is there any kind of way that we can be informal and have him come and talk to us without violating the sunshine? No, there's no way.
No, not if you're talking school business and you're elected official.
Then what you're saying is, if they, you were to submit a letter asking the CEO, Dr. Hardy, to come to be with you here at a special board meeting, or a board meeting, to discuss the levy along with, with the community, and, you know, what we see in here, at your next board meeting. Would you try that again?
With the questions that you have for him, let him answer.
Would you try this again? Would you put that in, uh, immediately?
Absolutely, we invite him to every meeting, it's not, he gets a formal limitation.
A special meeting, an immediate meeting, since this time is of the essence, so if you say.
I have a letter asking what you wanna know.
That's right.
And everybody's signed it.
Let's, put it, put it on the tape.
Just push it as hard as we can, so we can move forward.
Because this community is very. Does anybody have any idea why we're getting the resistance? That we are about getting the information that we, we sorely need? I don't understand the, the gap that we have, that we cannot, as a board, work well when we want to, with our CEO.
The reason we have a, and this is my personal opinion.
Okay.
So correct me if I'm wrong. The purpose of having a CEO is because we were having trouble with, in the beginning, the school board. So now, when we have a CEO, and this is my personal opinion, so don't get me wrong, because I have kids in the school system. It says, he's here to try to correct some of the problems that we have, that we've had in the past with the school board. So, if we didn't have a CEO coming in to do his job, correct me if I'm wrong, then how can we get to, I'm not, I don't know what I'm, you know, I'm saying, I'm just saying. It's like, I can't cook in the kitchen, if I don't have all the ingredients, if I need somebody to come in and help me. So it's, he, he, he's here to help, but he has a certain way, this is what I'm thinking, that I know how to do my job one way. You guys already know how to do y'all's job. But the purpose of having a CEO was because we were having problems. Correct me if I'm wrong. Okay?
Yeah, so we have to work cooperatively together.
You did have. It wasn't because totally of that. It was a political move, not only statewide, but nationally.
Right.
And Delving was serving schools.
CEO office in to correct some of our problems that we were having with the schools.
With certain school districts and, and children who did not pass, okay, number one. And, and it'll move on to bring about charter schools, and this is what I see, Charles, that, to privatize education. Which is a bad idea for, for our children. That's one of the reasons, once the state takes over, they have complete control.
Right, that's what I'm saying. If the state, if we had not got in proper, in trouble in the beginning, we would not have the problem that's coming up now. So I think, we're supposed to be hired, just for some solution to the problem. But we seem like, maybe I'm wrong tonight, I'm not taking this out, I'm just saying. So we need to try to see how, the bottom line, how we can solve the problem with him and the school, because if we had not had a problem in the beginning, we would not have had a CEO, the state would not have been taken over. So, correct me if I'm wrong, we just need to sit down and figure out how we can put this, putting the cake back together, so it all can work together. That's just my.
Can you do me a favor and state your name for the record?
What?
It is a hearing, it's public. It has to be in the meeting, yes.
Charles O'Toole Brown.
And your address.
Oh, man.
This is part of it.
Y'all don't know where I live? Seventeen forty-five Reed Avenue, Lorraine Ohio, four four oh five. And I pick a taxi, and I run children.
I think that's more, more point of clarification for myself, Mr. Hill. The renewal is three million?
Three point one million, yeah.
And.
Seven year renewal.
And, and that's great, and we need that money, and regardless of what we need, I'm sure we need all the money that we can get. But, but also, when the state came with their, uh, help, weren't we supposed to also get some additional dollars from the state, like fifteen million dollars? Can you update on where we are with that process?
Fifteen million.
I thought the state paid that was coming with the CEO and all of the supports.
I think it reads, it could come with that. I don't think it came with that much money.
That's, the state, the, the state money we received is for reimbursement for his salary, uh, and.
So we're, so the supports that they were giving us, they're, we're not getting any financial supports from the state, with being in Houseville Seventy and this issue that we're.
I don't think there's anything specific coming from them, that earmarked for Houseville Seventy money, from that I'm aware of. It's, we've, we've got a bump in state funding this year, but that, that was. Was due to the new state budget.
You know what that's, that we got?
Uh, two point four million this year.
Two point four?
And next year, we're expected to get around two point five, two point six million additional.
Okay. Now, was that already funded in your forecast?
It's already in the forecast.
Thank you.
Could you explain what exactly is in Houseville Seventy, so they can understand? Just a, a, a quick summary.
There's no quick summary.
I wanted, I wanted to ask them a question. Is there anybody sitting in this audience that thinks that this, that our education position came about within the last two years? When do you, when do you think this, this started? I mean, Lorraine's, Lorraine's slide into, into now, how, how far, how far back do you think it, Rod, I.
Fifty years. When they started.
Because I remember you coming, I remember you coming to meetings. And I'm gonna tell you what I think. I, I think this, and, and I started coming to board meetings in two thousand and three, and I never became a board member until two thousand and ten. And I remember sitting in an audience and discussing this. And we weren't doing very well, and, and I, I went to a board meeting, because I was a coach. And, and we had a tenth grader who was reading at a second grade level, and I said, there's something wrong. See, this didn't start, so don't blame this on any particular board. Well, no, we, when, when you talk about boards, but, but, but this, this thing started a long time ago. And, and, and now it's up to us to fix it. Yeah, and you're right, you're right, to, to me, this, to me, this, this is punishment.
That's right.
To me, this is punishment for, you know, for, for other political moves that other people made, and I'm just, I'm just getting that, okay? But if you think that anybody sitting here does not want to interact with Mr. Hardy, I, I can tell you, you're, you're wrong.
We want you to come together and do what's best for our kids, so we can move forward. Yes, you're right. And we have kids that are stepping into our school building on a daily basis, who are traumatized for whatever reason.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you what, what I think, Rod, and I, and I've had conversations with you, you know.
Right.
I think the first thing we solve is the attendance problem.
That's right.
Because forty percent of our, our grade school children have already missed more than five days, which, you know they changed the law last year with that House School four ten.
Transportation costs money.
No, the main foundation is the mama's daddy.
They're gonna need some money to get somebody in there to help them.
We've gotta make parental accountability.
I didn't mean to go, to go off like that, but that's.
And so you guys understand, in terms of.
I have had conversations with teachers in, in past years, who have been teaching for many years. I had graduated in fifty-five. And a teacher that I had then, I had a chance to talk to in later years, and she said, she would've done a better job teaching, because of the administration was so difficult to deal with. And I had talked to somebody else, uh, probably, uh, seven years ago, and she's been retired. And she said, because of the kids not having a home life, is the reason why she stopped, this is grade school, stopped giving them homework, because they didn't know where they were gonna spend the night. So we have a lot of social problems here going on, besides just the education system. If they don't know where their home is gonna be, if they can't have a place that they can call home, we're dealing with more than just education, we're dealing with home life. That's why we. See that those kids that come to school, is there gonna be that village to have the resources available in our school, whereby they can come, feel safe, open up, let us know what's going on. There are many young children, little children, who are suffering, who have many little health issues, that we need to, to look at and to see, to engage. This is the going on, this is the going on. It's at this point now, because of fifty years ago, it started. Yeah, it's been going on too long. And you're not gonna fix it up right away.
I wanna share one other thing, you know, in terms of our financial piece, because again, we did get the new money finally, um, a few years ago. Um, but our district presently, in terms of what our local citizens contribute, um, we contribute about twenty, eighteen to twenty percent of the cost per student. On average, the state other districts, it's more like sixty, forty.
Yes.
So, um, you know, that's, that's, that's a real challenge, when you're always trying to deal with things that you don't really have the needs to deal with. And so we've said this, we've struggled financially. We've had twelve million dollar deficits, seven million dollar deficits, four million dollar deficits. We, dealing with deficits in the money piece, I'll be honest, the money piece isn't gonna be the answer or the issue. Working cooperatively is. So, so it, it's, it's, and so we're not going to, at least myself, um, if we're not working cooperatively, then we're not gonna move the, we're not gonna be able to move this ball. That's, that's, we're gonna have to work cooperatively to do it. And, um, because this is not about just the money issue, just like our kids, our kids' needs are not just about money. Supports the kids' need go way beyond just money. So we're never gonna just have a conversation about just money, to fix what's going on with our schools and our community.
Well, there's one thing that I could say about our community that I saw, and I have to say, we need to applaud, number one, our basketball team, came in second place. The Leggeri League, number one, I think Mr. Ross, you know, did a magnificent job, you know, and I applaud him with that. And other than that, I don't know if you all saw on the TV, on the news the other morning, when they did, uh, area-wide problem with kids and guns in the school. That were brought in the schools, they went to Avon, they went to, they went everywhere, and guess who came up with zero? Not having to be followed with guns in the school, and never having even found one. Lorraine City Schools. So Mr. Monahue, we need to applaud, Mr. Monahue and our resources. And our resource officers for the job that they're doing. But make no mistake, it happened in other places, it can happen here, and don't think that we don't have some kids running around here with none, okay? But, you know, that is the thing we, that we, I mean, these are all things that we have to deal with, and we, like I said, we don't have time for this. No, you're right. No, you're right, Williams, it will not just take money, it's gonna take this whole village, this community, all of us cooperating and doing what we have to do. And opening our schools, and make them friendly, and make the kids feel like they can come in and they express whatever it is that they're going through. Where they can get the resources and the help that they needed, children. By, our kids are not stupid or dumb by any means. Some of them are very smart. I see the little two, three years old, four years old, the technology that these little kids know, you give them one of those paths and they just go, go for it. But I couldn't even do so. It's, it's, it's about our children, it's about our village, it's about education, and this is where our main focus should be.
Now, see to me, what you just said should be blasted in the newspaper. They didn't find any guns here. And, and the wonderful work that our security is doing. Now, that, that, that is a plus that should have been said about Lorraine, Ohio, and the public school system here.
I guess, I, I would just piggyback off of what Pastor Tim said. You're right, it's gonna take more than money to make, to get it right. But if this board's total responsibility at this time is to pass levy, then let's do our job and let's do it well.
Whatever we have to do to get to the CEO, to sit down with you guys, get it together, let's get this levy going, let's make it happen.
I think as a board, along with putting levies on, is to be physically responsible, physical responsibility. And thus what we're asking for is their information, just having their information.
Yes.
Well, who has a wonderful suggestion that we can get the superintendent here with us so we can talk about it? Uh, I'm sorry, CEO, old school. CEO, we've got to do something so we can all get here together, since all of us wanna be positive and work it out. So there should be some way that we can get all of this done simply by a matter of him being present. And I'm different by the science.
It's no, it's no different from the past. He's been invited, when he's ready to come, I think he'll come. Okay? CEO is ready to come and sit down, because a board usually works off the recommendations of, I'm not gonna say superintendent, now we have to work off the recommendations of a CEO. Okay, this, the first time that this can go on the ballot is next November, that's the first time, right?
This November, yeah.
No, this November.
It, it's.
And some, some important dates.
It's those trigger dates.
Yeah, there's trigger dates.
There's filing dates that you have to do.
Two resolutions you have to hit. So you have a resolution to submit for the auditor to do its calculation, and then you have a resolution to submit for the Board of Election filing.
And what dates are those?
Uh, I, my recommended dates, depending on timing of board meetings and stuff, I would say you do one in June and one in July. It has to be absolutely filed by August fifth, in order to be on the November ballot.
But un, but understand this, that even, even if a board decided to put it on, the board is not the one that drives it. It's, it's, it's a community.
It's a community, right.
It's, it's, it's a community, cause I've worked on every levy that they've, they've had since, since two oh three. I've worked, I've worked with Bambi on these levies, and, and so has, so has Rowan, she is.
It has to be that way, it has to be a separate entity for legal requirements. You can't ask for funds and also promote.
When we did, when we did the levy for three point one million dollars, it wasn't for what we needed. It was for what we thought that we could get from the community, what we could afford, okay? We actually wanted, we actually wanted close to five, but.
And we spread out through the communities of Lorraine, went door to door, if you recall, when we did the canvassing.
There was, there was a, there was a lot of work, and, and the last time it was passed sixty-four percent. So it was, uh, I mean, it was, it was, it was a good thing, but like I said, there's a lot of work, a lot of groundwork that has to be done before we get to that point. And, you know, we, we wanted Mr. Hardy to sit down and discuss it with us.
How soon can you all get the letter, the invitation, the special invitation to set up a meeting with Dr. Hardy?
We've sent several special invitations.
No, I'm talking about Don, I ain't talking about.
We'll send him.
Do it, let's do, let's, it's a song, say, let's do it again.
Can you send a letter requesting exactly what you're asking for? Maybe you can answer the question within the letter.
I've done that several times, actually, before this meeting, uh, when was, February nineteenth, I requested information so we could have these conversations and these discussions. There's a couple items on the agenda that we can't even discuss because we didn't receive the information. I mean, all we can do is request the information, that's all we can do.
And you, you, basically, we're saying you're requesting just the information from the treasurer's office, financial information, or is there other information?
There's other information pertaining to some of the other finance, and again, the pipe yard discussion, the early college discussion.
I was wondering about the pipe yard, I'm gonna tell you about that right now.
I mean, again.
We discussed that. We were talking about the purchase of the pipe yard.
This Lee, this is a board of education meeting, so as a board, there are things that we need to discuss. So again, the financial information was requested, as well as some information about those other things. I'm just giving you examples of what's on our agenda and the information we've requested from him that we don't receive. I mean, that's, is that clear? It, it is what it is.
And it's, it's specific stuff in there, it's like the renovation costs, the cost for operations, the cost for maintenance, the cost for, um, getting the, the thing into compliance with, um, there's all kinds of specific things, it's not just the pipe yard. Yeah, it's just, it's just.
It's just basically with financial that comes through the treasurer.
The financials, operations.
And this is gonna determine if you decide to put the levy on, or is the levy going on automatic?
What he said is we had other things on our agenda.
I understand that, but I just, my question, step back, I just asked a question about, so this is what we're waiting on to go forward with the letter.
And this is a renewal, right?
It's just a renewal, so do we, you're just asking for the same amount of money, so you really don't need to know what's there, you know what you need. I mean, it's not gonna change, uh, what you're gonna get based on, like I said, you know you need money, right? That's not, you know you need it, so.
As we finalize this, Josh, you've been a treasurer, you do this work. So that they can hear from something that's objective and not from this biased place, can you explain to them the reason that information needed, what information, because, I mean, if we say, it just, maybe from you.
You're on, Mr. Leo.
Standard process, obviously, and I'll speak to standard process and then current situation. Standard process would be, uh, I would need to get contracts, new hires, things like that in order, put them on an agenda, bring it before the board, the board, we have a discussion, the board approves, or, or doesn't approve them, either way. Uh, then I would take them back to my office, and that would be the point to where once we receive either, you know, if it's, if it's a physical thing or a contracted service, once we know that that service has been provided, then we would make payment. Uh, if it's personnel, if it's a new hire, we, based on the new hire date that was provided within the, the board agenda, we would start payment to that employee. Then, I, now current situation, obviously, the disconnect is that you have, the board's no longer making, I don't make those recommendations to the board, I make them to the CEO. And some of those are not necessarily my recommendations, because previously it would be, you'd have the superintendent, you'd have the treasurer, both reported up to the board. Superintendent would make the recommendations, it would be my job then to say yes, based on your recommendations and those costs involved. Yes, we can afford that, or no, we can't afford that. So you have that pyramid almost. Currently, the CEO now has the power of superintendent and board. So he makes those decisions, and those recommendations go through his office. It wouldn't come to my office until it's official, until it's, it's approved, signed off on, and then ready for payment, essentially.
That's the CEO.
That is the CEO's responsibility now, so that's, that's current situation, new situation. And again, I'll speak to, I think some of the, some of the reasons why he, he's doing what he's doing and protecting information is because of the sensitivity of a lot of it. It's impacting people's lives, it's impacting, you know, specific, if we're, we're eliminating positions, we're adding positions, it's impacting people's lives. So he doesn't wanna put it out there until it is one hundred percent official, which, that's when I would receive it.
That makes sense for him to do, now, does that, when that happens and that process, as we're saying, going to protocol, then does that go before the academic distress commission?
No.
The approval, okay, just totally the CEO?
CEO has, has full approval process.
So, then, but still, no matter what happens, this board, as it is structured now, has nothing to, to do with approving or disapproving?
Only on levy and funds.
Only the levy.
The problem is, is the information that we use to, yes, all the support information that we, for all the levies, both we were taking, all that information that we use to make those decisions with, that's what we're absent. It's not the, it's not the answer, yes or no, it's the information that you use to actually, that informs you of the answer. That's what, so.
So that's the information that you need totally in order to decide, uh, what you're going to do as far as the levy is concerned. Is that correct?
That is, yes. And we can, we can have the information, we can have the person here to discuss it, I mean, there's, this is, for us, this levy process probably isn't gonna be different than previous levy processes.
Okay, right, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
But like I said, that was totally at that time up to the board.
Right.
And all of that. Now it is no longer true, it's the CEO.
So the CEO has the option, he can choose not to engage in the process, or he can choose to engage in the process. That's his option.
But whether he engages or not, you as a board could still put that levy on the ballot, that's what I'm, that's what I'm, that's what we're saying. That's what we're saying, that's your job.
Yes.
One of the few.
One of the few, but hey.
Are we missing, are we missing the word oversight? Are we missing the word oversight? I mean.
Oversight of what, your job?
Over, oversight of, of the district's money, I mean, that's, that's what this board used to have, was oversight. We don't have it anymore.
You don't have it anymore, that's what I'm saying. You don't have it anymore. That's why I'm asking the question, Bill, you don't have that anymore. But you can still.
See, you know, there's, there's not different information on renewal or, or new money.
That's, now we're talking about renewal.
There's no difference in the information, that's what I'm saying, there's no difference in information. It's, it's, it's information, um, whether it's renewal.
The difference is in the justification of the need, that's where the difference.
But I mean, that renewal is needed.
New money is needed, renewal money is needed, there's no question of need money. It's a question of accountability with money.
Thank you.
Mike, I would go back to my question, let's, let's contact CEO and let's get this on the go. Get this on the move.
Okay, would you need a motion to approve or amend the minutes for February fifth?
I would like to amend the minutes. It says that Yvonne Smith was asked, I have the. Brown, yeah, that's why I came and looked at this, to see if Ms. Johnson, Mr. Minister, oh, I'm not.
Do you need a second to decide?
Yes.
Oh, second. Discussion, roll call.
Ms. Johnson, not Ms. Smith? Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And that's forty eight, and then ninety to approve.
Okay, now I need a motion to approve the amended minutes. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And as I stated earlier, there were a couple items, and again, Mr. Hox and Ms. Haney, I appreciate you guys being here. It's been a long time since we seen you at one of these meetings, so thank you for being here. Uh, but due to the, uh, lack of information that we had to have that discussion, we're gonna move that on to another meeting. But, uh, thank you so much. I guess I could have told you that a little earlier, I didn't even think about it, my apologies. Thank you. Okay? With that being said, uh, any other discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say that we had a superintendent that was here for some time, and then I read in the paper that, uh, he gave an email of, uh, saying goodbye to all of the city of Lorraine. I think, uh, to let the students know and the community know how well the board can act, we should have some type of luncheon to say goodbye, we should have some kind of dinner, you should, you should have a tea. But for him to just email in the paper after all those years, I, I think that, um, it was too dismissive. And if he decides that he does not want that, that's a different thing. But to show the students that we can work together even when we disagree, we should at least try that.
Certainly will reach out to him and see if he'd be interested in that. Are there any objections to the board?
Good idea.
Okay. Certainly, yeah. Okay, uh, our next meeting is scheduled for March fifth at five o'clock right here at the media center. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes, the regular meetings are now five o'clock.
I have a question, are we gonna continue to have meetings every second and fourth Monday or?
First.
First and third.
First and third.
First and third.
President's day.
It got moved because of the holiday, President's Day.
So it's gonna stay first and third?
Correct.